Call the panel select board meeting to order at 7:00 PM. The agenda approval, approve the minutes, warrants, mail, administrative assistance report, transfer station supervisory report on the new business will be the fire chief is here to talk to us and the emergency coordinator. And then we're going to set the 2017 tax rate. And then we have a citizen group petition for the select board that we're going to discuss, then legal will be the last thing on the agenda.
Move for approval, Linda?
Second. Anything to be added? Discussion on them? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prove the minutes for last week.
Second.
Any discussion on them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Warrants. Hey, payroll ending eight eleven twenty seventeen in the amount of eight thousand six hundred eighty dollars and seven cents. Counts payable ending eight eleven twenty seventeen in the amount of eight thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars and forty cents. The large ones on this is John Ray and Sons Fuel and the IRS. Each one of them was over well over two thousand bucks. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
You've got three seconds.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's who I hear first. I think I heard Sue. Grab one, pick one.
We have BCRC public meeting notice agenda for the Bennington Coffee Cell Waste Alliance meeting, proposed agenda for September thirteenth, twenty seventeen. Fire. We have a letter from Shannon Versati to do with response to a formal complaint. Basically, people have heard her speak before, but she's basically stating that the process here, she did some things to do with the meeting itself. And it says, "I did indeed apply as a private citizen to this program. My application reflected my membership on the panel planning commission and I used text directly from panel town plan to complete the application there." That's, I guess, the short of it. And she wanted to let them know that the purpose and empower panel committee was really to get groups of people together, decide what to do for the town, to then reach out the whole thing. Then we got the Bennington Rescue Squad. They're asking for support. I guess the best way I would say this, they want some, apparently they cover help, partially fund emergency medical services is what they're looking for. This went to the rescue squad. This is a copy to us. I would say at this point, what we might want to do is wait and hear what we hear from the rescue squad, see what their response is to this, because really what they're looking for is, they want to make sure that everybody, that all patients are handled and taken care of in our town if they need emergency care, but they're trying to work out an agreement that helps them in the cost. And that, I would say that the rescue squad, I'm sure, will probably respond to this letter. If they do, Bruce, could you have them give us a copy of what their response would be to that?
I got you.
Thank you. Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, this is to do with dam, and they wanted to let us know that the info design for the hazard assessment study for it is the panel dam shall remain classified as a low hazardous structure. And we've approved the moving forward the power plant. And we have a thank you from auditor for the pay raise. Now, I have a letter that Joe Byrne, a road foreman, did to do with a Moche grant application that he's applied for. This is to basically to do with, we understand they mentioned that the contribution of approximately five hundred and seventy dollars will make the town a shareholder in the equipment. This is for Moche to try and control the runoff on banks, so plant grassing, et cetera, to meet the new state laws. It doesn't say we have to sign it, it was just a copy to us. We have another one to do with the hydro dam. This is, went to, see who's got it, Perk, I guess, is part of the people they sent this to. But it's to do with revised cofferdam plans for the tannery redevelopment. Due to the surface not being even, even after they were done, the existing ones wouldn't work, so they redesigned a new one, and they're hoping to move forward with this by August seventeenth. And of course, it has drawings and a lot of other stuff to go with it. This is basically part of the hydro project. Okay. Do that. And we have a copy of the town plan that has been given to us. I know the planning commission is getting ready to hold their public hearings, and once they get through with their public hearings, they'll make any correction or changes that they're going to do based on the public comment.
Yes, what's the process for that?
That's what I'm going to tell you.
Okay, sorry.
And then at that point, it comes to us, and then we hold a couple of hearings and have to go through the process. And we as a board can either approve it, or we can be a petition and it has to be to the vote of the town, or we can decide that it's a vote of the town to approve it. That'll be our decision at that time, based on what public comments and stuff we get, we usually.
But it starts with the planning commission and they do the hearings.
Planning commission first, they do their two hearings.
And then go to the BCRC for approval.
Yeah, that's a regional approval as well. Now, I expect the BCRC will be okay, because they're a member that helped write this. So that hopefully that process, but then it's going to come and have to go through the process.
They also hold a public hearing on it.
Yeah. They did the last, hold it after we approved it to see if it's region right, because we do it first, then they do it. Okay, that was my belief too. And then we have something from the group that did the council road development, that did the empower panel, talking about their third step, which they're going to have a meeting on August twenty ninth at six thirty to nine PM, which is a Tuesday at the panel elementary school. And it's to do with the committees that are being formed to work on, they picked five projects, and I'll read what those are. Develop a network of farm and food producers in panel to share resources, market together, and to connect unused land with new or expanding farmers, foresters, and other producers. It's one of them. The next one was develop more trails and rejuvenate the river to provide better outdoor recreational opportunities in panel. It's the second one. Third one, reduce barriers to starting and growing businesses in agriculture in panel. And then the fourth one, grow jobs in panel through business incubation and redevelopment of underutilized properties. And the fifth one was build a community-wide greenup process in panel to address roadside litter and illegal dumping. And that's the committees, and as I said, they should be meeting on Tuesday, August twenty ninth, at six thirty to nine PM in the panel elementary school. And that's the citizens group that'll be doing that. Okay. That's the man. Administrative assistant report.
Okay, last week, voided AP fifty-three is requested, fifty-three A, excuse me, is requested by the board. Fielding complaints to the sheriff's department is requested. Scheduled staff meeting with the website creator would be held eight twenty-two at eleven AM here in the town office. Tom, I believe, did I send you an email?
Yes, you did.
Do what you know. Okay. If you can come, that would be good.
I shall.
Okay. Worked with the road foreman to revise and reissue the existing weight, excess weight permits. Filed an auto claim with our insurance for, insurer for a backhoe incident that occurred at the transfer station. Tom, you going to talk about that, or?
Yeah, love it. There's not much to talk about.
Not really. Followed up with Jay landscaping regarding the mowing of the north panel ball field. There was a complaint from the Little League, which Jeremiah has corrected. Checked with the BCRC for any emergency services equipment grant money for the fire chief. People are looking into it, still catching up from vacation on some items, and spoke with Chuck Watson today. He's coming in tomorrow. He's still working with Dell on the computer quotes, and he will forward the quotes to the board as soon as they become available from Dell for authorization to proceed from the board. He asked if he could come to a September board meeting to discuss the telephone upgrades, and he's also working on some copier replacements.
Okay. How'd you make out? Did the sheriff get back to you?
Not yet.
I assume the complaint, you're talking about this one with the parking lot?
Yeah, I fielded two, plus a previous one the board wanted from last week, Northwest show.
Okay. Oh, yeah, with the fireworks. Okay. But you haven't heard from them on either one? Okay, thanks. Board had any other questions they wished to ask? Okay, thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Okay, new business, fire chief. You're up.
Hi, my name is Steve Coon. I'm the chief of the panel fire department. And we just have some radio communications issues with us and panel valley, since they went from wideband to narrowbanding. We have a difficult time in quite a few spots in the panel to communicate with our truck radios back to our base radio, or trying to communicate just back and forth to one another. There's a lot of dead spots where we can't reach out. And the biggest concern is of mine, and I'm sure it is to Jason, public safety and somebody, I don't want to see someone getting hurt, because we have a, we cannot reach out and say that we need this, or we need that, or we just need to get out of the house, or something like that. We're just, I'm just looking out for the people in the town of panel. And there was, you know, we have tested a repeater system, a mobile repeater system, put it in the panel center firehouse parking lot, and went around the whole town of panel all over, and the communications were a lot better by when we did the testing. I just want to bring it to you guys, you know, and ladies' attention, what was going on, and hopefully we can somehow resolve, get to the bottom of this problem.
How can we help?
Well, a repeater system would very much help. Last time we checked on the prices and stuff on a repeater system, it was in a range of a little over fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen?
Fifteen thousand. I'm sure that was a couple of years ago, I'm sure everything gone up. The rescue squad has a repeater system, and they've had it for, I mean, and Bruce knows that they very rarely have any communication issues in the town of panel with the repeater system that they have. And that system's been there for, I don't know.
Can you piggyback on their system?
Um, I don't know. I mean, I don't know the, all the answers to that. I mean, I did, I don't think so. Craig, Craig Goldell was supposed to come with me tonight, but he went out of town.
But they might, there's several costs when you put in a repeater. I've been in the radio business for years. The bottom line is, is that you might be able to use the same tower, based on what the frequencies are, and that's, there's a big cost to putting in the tower, hooking up all the power and stuff to the repeater. The repeater itself, like you say, is fifteen to twenty thousand, but you can spend, you know, based on how you go with the tower and where, so forth. So the question I would ask is, would the repeat, would your signal work from where the repeater's working for the rescue squad?
Yeah.
The rescue squad is set up in a private location.
And it's a public residence.
Someone's private.
Yeah, well, you'd have to ask them, and if he says no, then it's no.
No. Appears that it's not that way. We have done some testing, and we can set it up here in panel center, and we have applied through a grant, but apparently we're not getting, we did not.
But I just, the reason I'm here tonight is to bring it up to the select board attention, that we are having an issue with that.
Okay.
And Jason and I, we went to the Bennington PD, we had a meeting with Mr. Doucette, and on their end, that was supposed to be all squared away.
Do you know if the tower, on Tower Road was put up? Yeah, they were going to put up a new one?
I don't know. It was very expensive. They offered us a rent.
A space?
It was very expensive. Extremely expensive. So we have, we have what we feel is a location to put the repeater. It's the cost of buying it, it's cost of new frequencies, it's a lot of, a lot of costs.
New licensing for the fire departments, because once you get on the repeater system, it's a different licensing than what we have for our base radio at the fire department.
Broadcasting for other, more lots?
The radio companies, they, you know, they provide all that service for you, but there is a.
So that's my, that's my concerns, and, you know, panel valley's concerns, and everybody else in surrounding in my fire department. I was very concerned about that, not being able to.
As I mentioned earlier, I tried to work with the Bennington Regional Commission to see if we could find some funding somewhere. I talked with Allison, she works a lot with emergency services. She fielded it to another person who's looking into it, so if I hear something, I'll certainly let you know.
Okay, or Jason. I mean, it's just, you know, it's just, it's frustrating sometimes when you're trying to reach out and get ahold of somebody and tell them that you need another fire truck, or you need ten more fire trucks. You just can't get out there. And it's like, you want to just like, take your radio and throw it out into the bushes.
And it's not, it's not just panel, I mean, all the towns are.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Issues. They are buying repeater systems.
Everybody's going with a repeater system, and that's the way to fix it, since nationwide they went from wideband to narrowbanding, and ever since they narrowbanded everything, it's.
That was just recently too, was it? Not that long ago?
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Right.
And that's when we had, you know, all the fire departments changed their radios, the frequencies in the radios, the pages, and all that stuff.
If you're trapped in a house, or your family's trapped in a house, you want a little bit of money, you want some protection.
There's no grants or anything?
There is. Those we've applied just recently.
And they keep looking, like I said, Craig, you know, Craig Goldell keeps.
Continuing.
Continuing looking for grants out there to try to do this, and hopefully we can get something figured out, and that was like I said.
Yeah, I was a little surprised to hear that that particular item that you need didn't qualify for a couple of things. I was like, really?
Yep.
There's programs out there, but not for communication.
That's my main, that's my biggest concern, being the fire chief in the town of panel. And like I said before, Jason, I'm sure it's his concern also, for the people in the town of panel, for fire protection.
All right.
Okay.
Whatever the call may be, we may be at.
Yeah, I guess there's a, we'll have to see what we can do, that's where we're at at this point, but keep us informed.
We will keep shopping around and keep looking around, and, but I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Something that has to be done. As long as something can be. Originally, this, this grant, this recent grant that we did apply for, it would have been a match to it. We were planning to come to the board, asking for the partial match, if it all holds together, but apparently it's.
But we'll keep, you know, striving ahead, and hopefully there's something out there or.
If I hear something, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we're going to set the twenty seventeen tax rate. Who would like to read that off? I'm paid.
You.
Time me to do that?
You're the chairman.
Got to give somebody an opportunity here, okay. Basically, what we're going to do is tell you what the twenty seventeen tax rates is, and I'll go down the list that we have. Town general tax will be point two one zero six. Local agreement state aid tax will be point zero zero three four. The town road tax will be point two two oh three. The total municipality tax rate will be point four three four three. The sewer bond flat tax per parcel developed will be sixty-nine fifty, undeveloped will be thirty-four seventy-five. State education tax, homestead will be one point three eight eight seven, and nonresidential will be one point four two nine five. The total town plus state education tax development parcels, homestead rate will be one point eight two three oh, plus the bond of sixty-nine fifty. Nonresidential rate will be one point eight six three eight, plus bond sixty-nine fifty. Note that your taxes will be due November tenth, twenty seventeen. And I can tell you what the pluses and minuses are. The town general fund went down minus one point seven two cents. The local agreement on education went up point oh two cents. Town road fund went minus point three oh cents. For the total municipal rate went minus two cents. So it says the homestead was plus two point six six cents, it went up through the state education tax, and nonresidential was minus point four five cents. And let's see, the total plus state income for putting it all together, homestead was plus point six six cents, nonresidential was minus two point four five cents. So nonresidential went down, and the homestead went up. According to that. Would you like to get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, citizen group petition. We have a petition in front of us tonight. Basically, reads, "We, the undersigned, request that no action be taken on any individual initiative that comes out of the climate economic model communities program," in quotes, dot voting exercise on July twenty-fifth, "that no town resources, human or financial, are used until the select board holds a townwide vote by referendum with a yes or no legal and democratic wise vote on each initiative." And we have one hundred and seventy-two signatures.
I have a statement I'd like to read regarding that.
Okay.
What's your name? What's your name?
I'm Dorothy Izzo. Okay, so, we're here tonight, as you know, to present our citizen petition to you. It has one hundred and seventy-two signatures, which is far more than the required five percent of registered voters required. It is also far more than participants both supportive and concerned of the empower panel program itself. There has been a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding regarding this petition, so I would like to read the following to clarify what this petition does and does not seek to do. We created this petition because we felt that the empower panel program and its process did not allow for adequate citizen input regarding the selection of initiatives to be carried out in panel. As you know, the original process did not allow a no vote, or a none of the above. When Bob Jarvis came to the select board wanting to discuss concerns, he was told by the select board that the place to bring his concerns was to the dot vote meeting on July twenty-fifth. Anyone who was at that meeting knows that any attempt to discuss concerns about an individual initiatives were highly discouraged. Several people with concerns were even silenced by heckling. In fact, the official agenda of the meeting only allowed for people to champion ideas, not discuss their concerns. Bob was given three minutes at the very end of the meeting to read a prepared statement, but he was met with heckling and name-calling. After the meeting, we were called provincial and climate deniers. This has only strengthened our resolve that this process does not allow for a true democratic discussion of both the pros and the cons, and a legal vote to ensure a majority of our population actually support these initiatives. We have been accused of being fearmongers and bullies, and yet the only bullying we have observed has been from those in favor of the program, who do not seem capable of hearing an opposing opinion without feeling threatened. It has still not been addressed that many portions of our citizenry did not even receive an invitation to the program. Most importantly, most of the residents of the trailer parks and people who do not own their homes. The creation of this petition was in part to ensure that these neglected groups also have a say in what happens in panel in regards to the VCRD program. Many of the signatures came from people who did not receive invitations to attend. This petition does not seek to prevent people from assembling. This accusation has been passed around by both members of the planning commission and Paul Costello himself at the July twenty-fifth meeting. Every person who helped in the creation and distribution of this petition have actively and respectfully participated in the empower panel program. Many of us from the original steering committee meetings. We have not attempted to disrupt meetings, on the contrary, we have listened to everything people have said, and even gone beyond that, and read every piece of program material available. It is ludicrous to say we want to prevent peaceful assembly. In fact, part of the reason for this petition is because we feel that there should be more meetings regarding this program and not less. There should be more discussion, and especially of the pros and cons for our town. What this petition does not seek to do, what this petition does seek to do is to require a townwide vote before any resources or actions are taken, financial or human, on initiatives emerging from the empower panel program. This does not prevent task forces from needing. This does not prevent the VCRD from sourcing funds and programming to help these task forces. It merely ensures that every panel citizen gets to have a real conversation about the changes that these initiatives could bring to our town. Then have a legal yes or no vote on whether or not it wants to take these actions, make these changes, and spend town resources. In closing, I want to reiterate despite what others have been trying to portray in the media and social media, that we are not a tiny minority. We were able to get one hundred and seventy-two signatures on our petition without even going door to door. If we had the manpower and didn't have jogs and personal likes, we could have done that, and I feel fairly certain you would find that those with concerns about this program, if they even know about it, are actually a silent majority. If you were to allow this program to be discussed at a town meeting, and a greater effort was made to really reach out, to hear everyone's opinions about the program, and to educate them about it, I think you would find many more people who share our concerns, even for those who support the program. We do not understand why they would not support allowing more time to bring this program and its goals to the townspeople on a greater level, not fast-tracking it. If the ideas and initiatives really are wonderful, then they will certainly stand up to the test of a townwide discussion and legal vote. If these initiatives go through with a legal vote, then we can all rest assured that it is truly what panel wants. Thank you for your time, and I ask you to listen to what at least one hundred and seventy-two residents want in regards to implementing transformative changes in our town.
Thank you.
Can we have a copy of that?
Yeah, we need a copy for our file anyways. You'll need to give Linda a copy of it, she'll put it in there. She can actually attach it to the minutes of this meeting.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Any more questions, comments from the audience? Got a legal discussion we have to discuss.
You skipped over Tom.
You skipped Tom.
Oh, Tom, I didn't.
I noticed that.
I told you before we were skipping over.
She was doing that, and I went, we didn't do Tom.
You didn't get the hint. Come on.
You were just about ready to get one, I'm going to tell you right now, though.
Did you have a question?
Well, we're going to come back to it, I guess.
No, we accepted your petition.
Oh, it's accepted?
Well, we've got your petition.
Well, I don't know. And you said there's a legal discussion.
No, the legal discussion's got nothing to do with you.
Got nothing to do with petition.
Oh, so it's accepted?
You just gave us the petition.
We've taken the petition, we have.
So what happens next?
Well, I think that the next step is, you got a meeting on August twenty-ninth. We need to see if they, if they come asking for resources or funding, basically if I understand this correctly, you want to make sure that we see that the citizens have a say in it.
So you are accepting the petition, for what it stands for?
You just gave it to us.
No, no, I understand we just gave it to you, but are you accepting for what it says, that, that people should have a vote on?
Right. Would it be a town vote?
Yes.
Right, would it be a town vote?
Town vote for the funds? Or a town vote to go and clean the river itself? I don't understand where you're coming from myself.
If you're planning on spending any of your town money.
We're not. There's no money been talked about anywhere. It's all volunteer.
Not just that, yeah, not just that, no. When they bring their...
Well, you're talking about two different things.
No, I'm not. I didn't get to speak.
No. Here's the way I understand it, you're reading this. And I'll read it again. Basically what it's talking about is that any human or financial town resources are used, you don't want anything done unless there's a vote of the town. Is that not true?
That includes the planning board, too. I mean, they're part of...
Well, the planning board is an appointed board by us. We cannot go and say to them...
You don't have any say over the planning board?
We can't go and say, "You can't work on a town plan." We can't say, "You can't have public hearings about a town plan." They do that, then they bring it to us, then we'll discuss the town plan. If that's what you're referring to, because they really don't...
That's what I'm saying, right. I'm referring to you have power over the planning board, just like men do.
We don't have, we appoint them. And we rely on...
There's six people on a planning board, they can say anything, they can do anything they want with a town?
They can do anything they want and put it in writing and provide it to the public to hear and make comments on it.
That's what they want, that's right.
And they're going to do that, and when they're done, and when they're done doing that, it will come to us and we will do the same, and then it'll go to the Bennington County Regional to make sure it meets the regional plan. In that process, all the town citizens out there, and I'll say this again, I said it on the air once before, have a say in that. They need to come and talk about it, because once it's passed, that town plan becomes the object that they will use then to write further statutes and bylaws that will affect the citizens of the town. If it's got something to do with your concern of smart growth, and they say this is the only place this can be built and so forth in that town plan, and then they put it into the bylaw, that's gonna happen unless you come in and voice your concern and have it changed, or petition us to have a townwide vote for the town plan, and then it gets voted down. But remember, if it gets voted up, what's in it will be in it. So your best chance for change is to go to meetings, have your voice heard, explain why you think something shouldn't be the way it is, and go through that democratic process you talk about to see if you can make change.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I want to go back to our petition, it's not about the town plan. That's gonna be a separate petition. That's all I want from a petition. But what I'm saying about Empower Panel, though, that's different. What we're talking about is different there.
The Empower Committee can do, all those committees can do what they want. They weren't appointed by us. They're gonna form, they're gonna do whatever they want. If they raise grant money or raise other things and move forward, we don't stop them from that process. There's no townwide vote. They're doing it as a citizen group and they're moving forward. If they come in and ask us for money, you know, it'll be based on, you know, if they're asking for a hundred bucks for something, we might go along with that. But if they're asking for something that's gonna impact the citizens of panel money-wise...
Or just, I mean, yeah, but I mean, something big, though, even.
If it's, if it's big, then it's a different story, because we'll have to go to the voters anyways. There's a dollar amount that we're, say there was some construction for a trail or something else that was going on, there's a dollar amount where we're required by law to go out to request bids on in the process. And in that process, you know, I think that's the time citizens come in and say, "Whoa, no way," or, "Yes." But we can't, and if that's town money, and if we don't have the town money, we have to ask for it for a grant or a bond, we can't do that without the citizens approval anyways.
So even if it's not financial things, I know we've talked about bike trails along the roads and things like that. So say they want to do a bike trail on 346, so that it's easier for people to get around. But that means you have to go into somebody's property and then take three feet of their front lawn to put in a trail. How, does that come before the board, or do these committees just get to do whatever they want?
The committee can try what it wants, and if they raise enough money to buy that right away, fine, but if it's, it's not gonna be something that the town will take by eminent domain without going through a very legal process. We have to do that. We're not allowed to just walk in and take...
Which is, is that included town vote on that? Or no? Eminent domain, what does that include?
Eminent domain means that we're, we're in the process of taking property, and there's a whole legal number of steps we have to go through to justify, and we have to show where it's a public good. There's just a ton of stuff you have to go through.
So the question then, I guess, would then, if you had to use an enforcement mechanism like eminent domain to do something like that, doesn't the petition kick in and that goes to a town vote, rather than just going through whatever the normal process?
Well, what the petition, I understand, is, is to do with any of these five items that I read off, that they're, they're working on and have a committee.
Right, in one of those...
It's not to do with any other thing that this board is doing on its own ahead of time, in the future.
Right, in one of those trails.
Because we're empowered to do certain things simply because we're elected to do that. But your petition has made it clear that Empower Panel is your concern, and your concern is about the things, these initiatives that were created by the group that met and basically held their vote session and created this, and they're gonna move forward. Now, if they have to come to the town for specific funding and stuff like that, your petition says you want to vote.
Yeah, like, for instance, at the beginning of this whole thing, they came to you asking for postage to Millau, to all cars, and went to some of the people in the town. Okay? And you approved it.
Yeah, we've done that for several different things that occur.
In the future, if they come looking for anything like that, signatures of approval, word of mouth approval, anything like that, the people in this town should have a say in that.
If they're applying for a grant, and if they come to the select board and ask if we would support the grant effort, will we sign on to that? We have done that for Oak Hill and several other things in town. I would probably do that. That doesn't mean they're gonna get the grant. It means that we said, "You can move forward with your request, but you're doing it on your own."
If whatever they're proposing has any potential to negatively impact a single person, a single person's rights in this town, right to choose, you know, right to their property or anything, that should be...
That's a different story. That's a different story. If somebody is raising money to put signs on a trail, I don't have any choice in supporting that type of grant. And then we've done that through the years. What you're concerned about is if somebody comes in here and says, "I want to take these five properties down in North Panel, and I want three feet of their property for a bike path."
Yeah, that's one side of it. The other side is if you build the bike path, who maintains it? Does that become a town liability?
Well, it's going on which road. If it's on 346, it's the state's, it's not ours.
I think some of the path, the hiking trails, a couple months ago, we had a youth group come in here, I don't know if you're familiar with that at all, that's, that's looking to do some projects. We own, you know, a large piece of land, they came in and were willing to do some studies and possibly go in there and build some trails using our own youth here, paying them, and they would, they would, they would go out and gather their own funds. It's a very, very good program. It benefits us, it benefits...
And it's on town property.
And it's on town property.
It's not anybody else's.
And we supported it.
That's right. I think that's right.
That's why, that's why we're, and that's my understanding, is that's not what you're talking about. So I want you to be clear that those things we move on and we do, do, even though they touch on to trail development and the rest, what we're concerned about is when they impact a person's property or has a major money impact on the community.
Or they impact the community on a whole in some way or another, maybe not monetarily, but some way or another, right?
Everything impacts the community in one way or the other. We just set a tax rate. You know, should we have a vote on the tax rate because it impacts every single person in the town?
Yeah, well, I know.
There's duties we have to do.
We don't want this to be marginalized. We want to, you know, we are townspeople, we do live here, we want to be heard. So that's it.
Yeah, and I've heard you loud and clear, and I think what I'm hearing from the rest of them, any of you have any questions about the concerns that they're doing? Because the concern, well, I'll let you say what you think their concerns is. From my point of view, if it has a monetary, large monetary impact, then I'm concerned about it. If it's, somebody asked me for a few stamps and a hundred dollars, I'm not, I might bring up the fact, oh, I want a larger mail list at that process. I think I asked them that time, and I was told that we were gonna give the clerk the mail list. But the real thing is, is how do we get a residential mail list versus a voter's mail list, or, in this case, I think it was the property tax mail list they used.
So the town plan has a public comment period, but it doesn't seem like there's any public comment for any of these projects, just because they're private individuals with grant money? What if, what if something they decide, decide to develop, you know, the neighborhood doesn't want?
Their method of raising public comment was their public hearings, albeit how they were spread out there. I mean, we do a town meeting, we post in a couple places that we're gonna have a town meeting on something, and we're lucky to see 20 people show up. They had more people than we get for a town, town meeting sometimes. The question is...
They did not verify where all those people were from. I was there, they didn't ask me if it was a resident panel or...
No, they said it was fine that it wasn't representative.
Yeah, about the only time we ask at the meetings I've been at, with planning board and the other things, is if we're swearing somebody in, or when we're doing a vote like we do at a town meeting, and we're asking for hands or something, we want to make sure we know who's citizen and who isn't, or whether they can speak or not. This here, they took a vote, they should have managed to...
They let my daughter vote.
We didn't know when...
They were all showing...
We didn't know what was gonna be voted in, so how could people know what the impact of that's going to be? It's too nebulous. We don't know if somebody says, "I want to develop a derelict property." What derelict property? There's no checks and balances, there's no public impact.
What do you consider a derelict property?
I think the next step...
It wasn't derelict, that wasn't the word, derelict wasn't the word.
I'm gonna try...
Defunct property. Okay, what's considered that?
Well...
It wasn't even defunct.
I think they're talking about like the racetrack, maybe the Mac molding building.
I'll use one, because one of the board members, I read this thing, and it says, "Grow jobs in panel through business incubation and redevelopment under utilized properties." I know somebody who bought a garage, is trying to build a garage. It'd be nice if this group would help them.
Yeah.
He's trying to put a garage up, nobody's fighting him.
I think that, I think they should be helping them.
But they're turning next door much...
That's where I'm at.
See, here's what I think these people are after. This is only my opinion, I just don't want to have nothing, everybody's got one. But I'm thinking that this thing has been shoved down their throat, they don't even know what it is.
Exactly.
You know? And if you understood something, then you can go ahead. But, you know, I don't want people, if I had a tract of land, you know, I wouldn't want a tract next to me loaded with all this stuff, because they're gonna wander onto me. There's gonna be problems. And if you're gonna take, and you want to make bike trails and stuff, you know, let's, them things should be discussed out, right in the get-go, right in the beginning. Don't be saying, "Look, here we are, folks, this is what we're gonna do." And this outfit, most of them were not from around here. They were from upstate.
I think you're gonna see that again.
And Mr. Jarvis there, you know, this thing could snowball into something, but I think all these people want is information.
They've already destroyed upstate Vermont, I mean, with the solar panels and all the windmills, and they're gonna keep, they're gonna migrate this way, and that's where it's going. It's not about bike trails.
And we're not against the initiatives. I mean, it's like, because like, far and wide I'm totally behind, but the thing is, it's, mine's right, it's being shoved down the throat. And it's, we would like to actually have, because this went, meeting one, meeting two, here comes meeting three, and that's, it would have been nicer to have more discussion with people in town about some of these things, and maybe even gotten more ideas from people that weren't represented, you know? That first meeting, which I actually couldn't go to because I wasn't here, it was like a, what, 10-hour meeting, same way for you guys.
About five hours.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't there, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I think the people just want more discussion about the ideas.
As an example, the five initiatives that were chosen would be substantially different if I had to go on business travel that week, which got delayed for a week so I could attend. That changed the vote quite a bit. So those five initiatives would have been completely different had, had I not been able to attend on July 25th. So I've never been in a process where you actually choose initiatives without any discussion of cost or risk or enforcement mechanism. And if I'd known the kids, I could have brought my kids and doubled up on the votes.
I could have brought my kids out of town.
The two groups don't really understand what the other ones trying to do. We're just trying to get some volunteers to help clean up panel. We're not looking for any money.
Ask us, we'll help clean up panel.
But I mean, we gotta get together and help panel. Nobody's trying to hurt panel. I've lived here 50 years.
I believe you are. You're not trying.
You're not trying. You gotta get together and work. I mean, don't get in groups and fight each other, let's get the group together and talk.
No, group, you get together and do something, I'll be right there to help. Somebody else comes in...
Well, people don't understand, when I had the Legion there, I can only put 200 people in there. That's a fire code. So now we're going to school. I'm not against your group, and I'm not against, I want to do something for panel.
I urge, I urge you to get, the people that you had signed this petition, and whoever else you can find, and I urge the same with the Empower Panel people, to get as many people as they can to this August 29th meeting from 6:30 to 9:00, because it says, "Develop, develop, develop, bro." You're gonna talk about what you're gonna do. Now, I'll grant you these five initiatives, some of them which you said you like, some you might not, but get into the one that you like, and you can lead it in the right path.
Sure.
And if you don't, and if you don't, you know, and just sit back and sit out here, then who knows which direction is gonna go?
I got one more question, is that it seems to me somebody's off a board, that they need something to do in panel. I don't understand where it's all coming from and why it's, are we missing something?
What you're missing is, all these people have one thing in common, the same as you, they're trying to make panel a little better.
We all care about panel, we all need to work together.
I like panel just like it is. I don't see where it needs a big improvement.
We're not talking about... You might like to see a few more jobs.
We're talking about, we're talking about cleaning up...
Yeah, I agree with you.
And then go down 346.
One at a time.
One at a time.
The bottom line is, you have a job, but there are people in town that would like a job, and if they can create a few jobs, that's a plus for the town panel.
Right, it depends on what you're talking about creating. If you're talking about putting a solar panel together...
None of that is listed here.
Because that's not creating a job.
Everyone in this town, I love this town as much as the rest of you, but we all have to work together.
Well, that's true. And I understand that the people with concerns wanted to work together, but we didn't, it was the process that was the biggest problem. Again, I have to say it again, I've never been part of a program like this where you choose the initiatives without one word of cost or negative impact. We all want to help, but there's two different job growth things there. One is getting regulation out of the way, the other one is redistributing.
So maybe we could go back to square one, and start again, and talk to them again, and start all over again, and work together.
One at a time, folks, or otherwise you're gonna...
So, I mean, where are you talking about, all these jobs? You're talking, oh, Mac molding, building, tract...
Mac building, racetrack, the garage down there. There's lots of places, the furniture place that's empty. Let's get people together and decide what we can do to put people to work, or put these places back into the tax rolls.
Sometimes you can't do it.
Yeah, but let's try.
If the county doesn't support it.
But if you don't try, you can guarantee a loss.
I'm not saying don't try, absolutely. I don't think we need Mount Pilgrim coming down here in town, or upstate Vermont coming down.
What we need, what we need from Mount Pilgrim is direction that tells us how to do this, so if we don't end up having people knocking on our doors saying we can't.
Right, but we don't need them sending people down here, trying to sway people's minds.
Some of the worst economic decisions have been trying to create jobs, which has decimated jobs. So we need to be careful about how we do it. And I go back to, again, we chose these initiatives without even discussing, discussing...
I can't, I can't change the past.
Right, I understand.
I can't change the past.
I understand.
All I can do is what's in the future, and in the future, I want you to attend these meetings and have your say.
I guarantee that I can.
No, but I mean, you travel for work.
No, but I mean, you travel for work.
Well, everybody does, and there's a lot of meetings where people can't attend.
I travel for work, every day.
You know, we all work, there's some meetings we can't attend.
That group, VCRD, out of the picture, they took them out. And panel people got together to start to talk a little bit, we might get something accomplished, but you've got an outside group with, with some backing-
I have found that if you don't-
And with an agenda.
I have found that if you don't work with the state, you'll never get the resources you need or the cooperation to move forward on a lot of things, simply because the regulations and the other stuff that bear down on you, you have to be part of that team and play, or otherwise, shut your door.
But we don't have to play by their rules all the time.
Only if you want to get fined, you don't have to.
Right, well, I don't mind, I might pay it or might not.
I can tell, I can tell you, as some of you know, I had an apartment building catch a fire and I had to have it inspected from bottom to top before I could ever open that back up. Of course, I put about, well over a hundred thousand dollars into it, but the bottom line was, they came down and not one of them argued with me. They told me what I had to do, I did it, and they sign off on it and I'm, and I run it.
But I don't, we don't want to be told what to do, I think that's the whole point. We want to, you know.
And I think you need to petition my failure, not us.
That's right, you don't want to be told what to do.
But that's, but that's also part of it, right? If they're telling us what to do, they should know that they're violating the will of panel. It can't just be of panel citizens, it can't just be, we're doing it because they said so.
I'm talking about state regulations and state rules.
No, I understand.
Stat.
We can argue, and I argue with them all the time about it, all the way straight through to the governor and some of these things.
You know, this, this whole thing is bigger than, than power panel.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
Much, much bigger, much bigger, but-
And all the towns in this state are going through a whole bunch of-
But I'm telling you what panel can do and what panel citizens should do, and from what I'm hearing, some of you are doing, and that is, attend these things, say your piece and be clear in what you think the impact will be, and either have them say, "Yes, it will be that way," or "No, it won't," and then move forward, because we can't stay stagnant.
Okay, but can we not, like, make major changes without a vote for the people? That's all. Can we just, like, I mean, these big changes, we're all part of the meetings, we all signed up, we're, we're doing it, we're doing it.
Well, let me, let me tell you, we made a big change, and if people know here, we put in a sewer system for three towns. That was voted on-
How many times?
Four, five times?
Five times.
Five times, we voted first. If anything that big occurs, the voters have a say.
And guys, we just did the town office vote. I mean, we couldn't do anything without a vote of the town, the town voted it down. It was not us, it had nothing to do with us, it had to go to the voters of the town.
Did we vote down buying some land and the town ended up buying it too, though?
Yesterday.
So, how, how does that happen, if we vote it down and you guys go buy it?
Probably another board came in and they did it again, who knows?
No, it's me.
The town didn't buy it.
I raised, I raised the money somewhere else.
But was that for our best interest?
But again, we can't, we can't control the past.
A storage building that would have cost you a half million bucks.
I like that, I, right.
And that came out of that project.
Out of that same project?
Yes, it did.
Well, then at least people know that.
The hydro, we're going to get paid money for it, that came out of that.
I liked the hydro dam, I got no-
The wastewater place to put your plant came out of there.
And that's good.
But the voters said, but the voters said-
But I didn't know that that had anything to do with the warehouse.
It has to do with all of it.
People would have known, if people would know, we wouldn't have done much about it.
Yeah, and it was, and it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we raised. Now, we had, because the voters said no, we had to give up a large piece of land because of that, and it ended up with just a forest on the other side of the road.
So, I heard you, thank you, I heard you-
It's nice to see that you guys care about the town, but let's do it constructive and let's all work together.
Well, that's what we try to do.
No, we're not, it's not just that, there's another side as well.
There's two sides to every story.
You weren't told no by us.
No, we were told basically, you've been formed and shoved aside by a group from not, not from panel.
Right, they came up with these agenda items.
They have a certain way they want to do things. They're going to do it that way.
They didn't ask first.
And they, they really select the way they operate, they, they change the conversation as fast as they can, they put it off, they, they give Bob three minutes at the end, then they heckle him, they make faces behind his back when he's talking.
Yeah, I, I, I was there and I did hear someone say a derogatory remark when you were speaking that shouldn't have been said.
But it was also broadcast down behind you.
Everybody should, should, should respect everybody.
But by the same token, you were pushing in no votes, different color, so, it was both sides.
Well, hang on, that was, hang on, that's, that's not exactly true. They, we, kids were allowed to vote, I said, kids went up there, Paul, Paul asked me what we should do about that, and I said, "I don't think you should count those votes."
Right.
And then he, he asked for the hand, and there were about two dozen concerned citizens, and nearly everyone said, "Don't count them."
Oh, I agree, I agree.
They were brought as a protest, but when they allowed us to say no, then they went away.
Yeah, if, if we were trying to stuff a ballot, we would have been smarter.
We're starting to repeat ourselves, I'm going to bring this to her calls because I got other business.
I'm glad to know you guys have our back, panel's back, and that you're looking out for the best interest, and that's what we're doing.
We've been doing it for many years.
Well, yeah, but really, it's, it's-
But again, we, we encourage you, we encourage y'all to, to be part of, to continue-
Oh, no, we are, yes.
We'll try and be part of this committee.
And be aware of being-
Tensions are good.
And be aware of being held at the schools, so that you can, it can be a large, large number of people.
Don't stop at that.
Oh, no.
Vote at them plant, them planning hearings.
No, we will.
Look at that town plan.
If I'm in town, I'll be doing it, I will.
Look at that town plan.
How do, how do we set up a petition for the town plan?
Way out there, some of them.
We just, we get signatures to, and what is the wording?
Check with the secretary of state, because there's a specific wording to have a vote on the town plan.
Okay.
You petition the town.
And that should be done soon.
Well, it doesn't have to be done until after the selectman makes their action, because at that point, even though we make an action, it doesn't take effect if you petition us, it'll have to be a vote.
How can I get my hands on a paper copy?
Yeah, I don't even think we first announce it.
It's got to go through the planning section.
Say that again?
How can I get my hands on, on a paper copy of the proposed town plan?
When is, do you know when they open a session?
You can ask for it.
Talk to Linda.
Yes, it's right on the T H E S, yes, they're our T H E S.
The key is, did all of you give your email to Julie so she can send you a copy?
Yeah, she said she was going to send us a copy, yeah.
Yeah, because you want to get your email, and then Julie can send you a copy and Linda can remind her.
Can we get the copy sent to us or?
Well, check with Linda and we'll see if we can get a half dozen or so of paper copies here, so we have to hand some out weekend.
It's pretty thick, so.
Because you're going to notice in that town plan-
The ones that were here were done at Stacy's because it was so, so much.
Yeah.
Read that energy section very well.
Oh, yeah, no, we seen it.
I had a glimpse of it.
Because like they're telling me, of course, I, I'm a fossil fuel guy, I love all them dead daddy dinosaurs, they keep me nice and warm.
Yeah, yep.
Anyway, here they are, they were talking about.
In turn, they use the word in-
In 2050, that ain't very far away, I'll never-
I'll be dead.
Twenty fifty, they're going to, eight thousand gallons of oil, all they're going to use. That's eight houses, eight, nine, ten houses. Come on, what are you going to eat them, electricity? Let's get real, folks.
Wood, wood, the stuff that comes out of the chimney from wood.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that, and that is the state design.
Well, yeah.
We know.
This is what's being pressured, so that's why I, I encourage everybody. I mean, maybe I'm all wrong, but I encourage people to go there and put some input in on this, some of this stuff you're going to be a bit swaddled.
When you get hollered at, we're going to say, "Ronnie told us."
That's right. Keep it hollered at.
Tell them I said it too, Peter.
You just get louder, that's all you do.
Go.
Well, if it's a state-run thing, can, is our input going to have it make a difference?
In what, what state?
What's a state-run?
Town plan is ours.
It's a town plan, not a state.
You said it's a state, state.
No, they're not, it's based on that state plan.
Right, so, so because of that-
What they did is, I heard somebody talk about the regional plan. We had the, they hired the people from the Bennington County Regional Commission to help them write this plan. There are set requirements by the state-
That's right.
-that must be in this plan, but those requirements may not be as stringent as what this plan is saying. So, what you have to do is see what the state requirements are and then see what's in there. I know we had something to do with flood years ago and I was more involved writing things then, and we took the least impact and put it in our plan and we met the requirements so people could buy flood insurance. Certain things are required.
If you really want to get involved, I'll give you another tidbit of advice.
Please.
That town plan, if, if that goes in, then they're going to have to try to pass ordinances to, to enforce it.
Okay.
That's when you've got to really get involved, if you want panel to be panel, if you want it to be Manchester.
No, no, listen, you're going to say yes.
You'll be seeing our plans.
You want more regulations.
But you have to.
Then you can run for select board and planning board and all the rest of them.
Okay.
You can, you can run for that stuff, but I-
You're part of the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
I think we talked about, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom, I haven't forgotten you.
We got Mark up top, sorry.
Sorry, I missed you.
We're not sleeping on our job.
You do.
You had an opportunity to help.
You guys only paid enough, probably right now.
Hey, they up there selling, come on, we get a few bucks now. They gave us $300 for.
We get $25.
That's not nearly enough, that's not nearly enough, guys, to go.
That's the first reason, what, seven years?
That's not nearly enough, I, I mean that sincerely, gentlemen.
Okay, guys.
All right, here we go, let's get through this thing, let's, let's go to this thing down. Linda, I moved to, and I didn't put in the report about the accident Fred had, Nelson knew about, about an hour after it happened, he had that rigged down, took a bumper off a Tundra, $1,800. We turned it all in. Unfortunately, it happened the day after someone went on vacation for two weeks, so it's still kind of in the thing, but Fred, but Fred talked to the insurance people and so forth and it should-
Tundra.
It's like, well, I drive.
Yeah.
The same thing as he drives.
I'm on board now, I didn't under-
He's probably not as fancy.
Okay.
Fred had an accident somewhere?
And not many miles.
One at a time, let's go.
Okay, so Fred had, he, he had an accident with the backhoe, hit that rig down, he was moving it down at the tipping shed, it just barely caught the bumper, and we got to see it several times on our new cameras, which work exceedingly well.
But Fred didn't get hurt?
Oh, no, no, nobody got hurt, nobody got hurt, nobody got hurt.
When you say accident, I always hear hurt.
No, I mean, he just, he just tapped this thing, but, you know, backhoe moving slowly has enough force to rip a bumper out like that. And, so, that's it. The organics is doing well, the collection's been slow to begin with, but it's coming along to start out on the first of July, and we've had some people donating some sawdust, which cuts down, the only thing we have to buy is the sawdust, because they come in and, and dump the stuff free for us, so. And I just had a light installed because it's going to be awfully dark in there to get stuff out in the morning and to fill stuff up, you know, in the winter and the evening and so forth.
Hold on, hold on, step one back here, the sawdust, I asked about that about six months ago when we first talked about it, Trevor was going to provide it.
Yeah, well, he, he said he will, and he kind of waffled a little bit, but that, you know, it's fine, what we're saving in money, we can buy a little sawdust or I can, I can run stuff through a planer if I have to, but we, we're getting stuff, we still haven't, we've been a month in and we, we still have 75% of what we started with, so it's not really going to take that much.
What do we do with our brush piles these days? Do we chip it?
We haven't chipped it, but we probably could.
How small can you chip it?
Well, whatever, whatever the chipper is.
Nah, not that small. No?
Well, you know, it doesn't take much.
I know Galivan just did Bennington's, but it's, it's not fine by any means at all, the chipper.
Yeah.
Not at all.
But I mean, we can, you know-
How, how small does it have to be for, for compost, I guess is my question? Wood rots.
Depends what you're going to use the compost for.
Yeah, it's got, it's got to be pretty, well, they take sawdust, so, I mean, Trevor takes sawdust up to the compost thing, so maybe wood chips would be adequate.
I know.
Actually, I shall, I shall. Let me put that on my list here.
If you double grind chips, they come pretty small.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, no, and actually, I don't think, I, I think he can, he'll take stuff from chippers and use it as compost anyhow, I don't think it has to be that small, really, Bruce, I really don't.
I don't, I don't know what you-
It's quite a lot what you use it for.
You say sawdust, that's fine.
And I talked with the-
If you use it in your gardens, one thing, if you're using it around plants, it's another.
Well, that's what, that's what it, but no, it all breaks down into a fine mulch, I mean, that's, that's the whole idea of it. I talked with a driver and so forth, he's a really nice guy, and the way they pick things up and then they, they rinse the units out, they, they dump it back into the truck, so, you know, it, it really works out well, I've watched them do it and so forth. So, I mean, that's really, the, the organics has worked out better than I thought it would, to be quite honest with you. And like I said, we're only five weeks into it, but it's, it's coming along and some people, I, oh, I just got a call later this afternoon after I got this done from Dave Kieran, who's the town manager of Shaftesbury, and he's going to sell us some extra compost buckets for $7, and probably bring them down next week. I was hoping to have them last week, but they've had a lot of problems with a lot of their moisture things and so forth. So, I told him, I read the paper, you guys are up to your, you know, he's got a lot of work to do, so, I just wanted to bring it up. Now, the, the loss control report that we got, that I got the last time, one of the control report that we got, that I got the last time, one of the railings, I haven't put those bottom railings in yet. Most of us, we have wiring across there and so forth and the things. And I have the stuff. Everything's there. I've been working a lot over in the town garage and doing stuff over here that I just haven't had the time to really get that done. Everything else is pretty well done. The other one about the overhead hazards, about wearing hard hats, I just noted that. That's, yeah, you know, nothing.
You guys have hard hats out there?
Oh, we have hard hats, yeah. Yeah. But he's saying about we needed to raise the things, you know, we're 25 feet away and they're nine feet wide. But it's whatever it is. We have that, you know. But the step highlighting, I not only did the step on the back of the, where the E-cycles are, I did it on the swap shop, the whole way around the swap shop to highlight that. The shelf integrity on the shelves and the bookshelves and the other shelves in the swap shop, those shelves are plenty strong. They've been holding books for years and they're full. And I went over there and we shook them and everything. All the other shelves are screwed, they're fastened to the walls. They've got cleats on them. They're screwed into studs. They're not falling over. You know, it is what it is. They're fine, you know.
They're fine, but didn't we get written up on them or something?
Yeah, we did because he doesn't, he said, he even said, there's no, there's no real policy on it. But he just wanted to write it up. He wanted to write up something that no policy on.
Why don't we, I'd make a suggestion. We skip the rest of this loss control and we'll talk about that at the end of the discussion in the executive.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We'll get down to that. I do want to, can I say one about the sinking soil, though, on TV? I really want to say this one.
About the sinking soil?
Yeah, it's a groundhog hole. And we filled it in several times. And I have it here that our tenant in the battery shed has not only not paid his rent, but he's also decided to damage the front porch. I filled it and said damaged it several times and put the shed off limits to customers and personnel with the exception of myself.
Can we catch this groundhog and we move him to town?
Smoke him out.
Well, I could, I could definitely try that.
Yeah, well, it makes sense.
I'll go get some of that stuff and smoke him if you want me to.
You get him out.
Well...
Just light it. Throw it in the hole and cover the hole.
Yeah, if he's in there. If he's not in there, it doesn't do you much good.
Well, if it isn't, you'll know where the other hole is. The smoke will come out and close that one too.
Yeah. Well, if he's in there.
Sometimes you only have one hole.
That's the only thing. This one's got a couple of them. Trust me. I know he's got at least two. All right, then we'll go down to the solid waste alliance. You have the agenda. I attached the two of your things that you think you only showed the front page on that. We're going to be going over the budget, some of the changes coming up, things that we need to do. Compost bin sales, we're going to be talking about that because we may be getting more in different ones. Public comment, of course, we have that in the next meeting. And then on the back, we'll be sending out a final report, which will include a report from the NRC on their issues, things that we had some problems with them. We must be sending out a budget for 1819. You may have questions on that as well. I haven't seen any of that yet. This is, you know, this is a tentative thing.
This is the Waste Alliance?
This is the Waste Alliance, yeah.
And this is where there's a combined budget where we pay a set fee?
Right. Right. This is a meeting on September 13th up in Arlington.
How often do they meet?
We, it's about three times a year, basically. And it depends if we have something, well, we had some special meetings, like I said, when we had to mess with the household hazardous waste there in the spring. That was a special meeting that I had to attend.
Okay.
Okay. And composting with gardens and so forth. I'm not so sure, you know, we have to pay enough for, you know, everybody's paying enough for composting whether we want to do that or not. But we'll see what the, see what the people think about that. But I mean, these are just discussions we're going to be having coming up. So then just go to the second page here. Recycling, we've shipped a bunch of batteries. I shipped a box of batteries actually last Wednesday. And Wednesday afternoon, I had one to three quarters full. People brought in that many batteries, you know, like drill batteries and, you know, all these things and so forth. And they're about 60 to 70 pounds a box. And we just send them out, you know, about every month and a half. And now it's going to be a little more often with some of these things. Oil.
Two more boxes. These are boxes. They're here for you this afternoon to ship more out.
I'll go ahead and, I'm not going to work tomorrow. I'm going to Pennsylvania. All right. I'll pick them up and I'll take them back Monday. We have, we have one extra right now, so we're in good shape. But she assured, you know, I called in for it. She assured me we were going to get them this week and she was true to her words. All right, oil, we've shipped over 200 gallons of oil since June.
What are you doing with the oil? Are you shipping local?
Yep. Taxpayers and panel. That's it.
I just checked.
Yep. And then the E-cycles, just two weeks ago, we just shipped another full truckload out. Our estimated weight on that is two and a half tons. And that's usually about what a truckload is on that. So we'll have $350 to $400. The last one's over $400 that we received on that. And the paper, we're receiving about $40 a ton on the paper now. But that's not enough to offset the hauling expense, but it still makes it, makes it more palatable, you know. And then on the other items, I have the town office, we installed new signs, moved some old ones around that Linda wanted me to move. Put the handicap sign on the front railing. So we drilled and tapped that so it's not, it's not going to blow around anyplace. And then everything's done except for one piece of trim on the door. I have it primed. It's already cut and primed. And we've got to put two coats of paint on. We'll put it on and touch it up in the front door. And then this door on the outside, we need to take it off some really nice day and fix the bottom and paint it and get it back on. And other than that, I think the exterior is pretty well done. Water Highway Garage, we installed a new 36 by 66 window in the upstairs office for egress and for lighting the office. I need a little bit of sanding and do a little plate spackling on some of the things and it's ready to paint. The electrical conduit was moved for it. And I need to put the seal in. And that's going to happen next Wednesday. And then next Wednesday, I'm also going to be doing some work with Stan on the flue. There's big, there's some big sprawls in the corner of the flue up there. And what I'm going to do, I need to get to, up to Morris Brick and see if they have any add mix or epoxy type adhesives to help hold these on. I've had a lot of success in the past with these type of things, but I haven't found any other, any other place around here or we may have to wait and do it at a later date. But I'd really like to get that thing done. And it needs sealed. That ancient, it was never sealed. The moisture got in there and that's the frost that would pop these things out all over. And we got one block that's kind of split. We're going to see how badly it is. The flashing got blown off. I need to cut that out. I've got a diamond saw that'll cut that out. And I have my metal break up there. We're going to fix that. And we're going to fix some stuff around the overhead doors where water's gotten in. We got to fix those things up too. And I told them I'd give them a hand with that. I have more experience with that than probably anybody else in this town, you know, and working for the town anyhow. Okay. And so, you know, we've got some wood. We ripped some down the other day. I got some stuff and he's going to get them primed and so forth.
So basically, you're going to do some repair work out there?
Yeah. I mean, this is fine. I mean, these guys have helped us out an awful lot. And I certainly feel obligated to give them some assistance too.
Don't have a problem. But there's been an oil tank out there. It's been there for I don't know how many years now, but there's been at least four people out there running this transfer station. It hasn't got rid of it yet. What's the story with this oil tank that I see, I see the cap for it and I say, don't use? How are we going to take care of that? Either get rid of it or use it or whatever?
Well, what I can do, I don't even have a lock. I don't even have a key to the lock. I'll cut the lock off and see what's in there. I don't have a clue what's in there. I'll probably have to take a sample of some type.
Get it tested.
We're going to have to send it out to some lab to get it analyzed. I have no idea what we have.
What would, where I'm at is, what would the HSMAT or any of those guys cost, the cost for getting rid of something like that?
Too much.
Well, the bottom line is, somebody's going to pay for it. And every year we wait, it costs more.
How much is, how much is in there?
About 500. It's a 500 gallon tank. I have no idea how much is in there. I can't open it up to test it.
Where'd the tank come from?
Well, it's been in there and it's got a, it's got a containment.
I think Stefan had it back when he was in the...
Tom, if you look up Clean Harbors, they have a local person in the Bennington area that can come over with it, give you a test kit or take a sample and they can tell you what's in it. Give you a price on pumping it out, removing it, the whole nine yards.
But, and I think we're better off than that.
Well, I think we need to find out what we have, how much we have. This is 500 gallon tank.
Yep, they can do all that.
It's been there for some, I'm waiting for, it looks like it's tipping. I know you guys prop it up, but I'd rather have it taken care of than have to take care of a spill. It's just been there too long. And I'm surprised the guy didn't write us up for that. He must have looked at it, saw the padlock, thought everything was great.
I don't know.
But he doesn't know what's in it.
Well, it's on a concrete, it's on a concrete base. It's on a, it's in a containment, concrete containment area, you know. But, but no, I understand what you're saying. And I personally, I'd like to get rid of it too.
So let's do it.
I'd love to, I'd love to get out of there.
How are we taking, when we take our oil, how do we, how do we collect that? Collect that barrels?
Well, it goes into five gallon, it goes into five gallon square buckets. And I call the individuals that take it, they come up and pick it up. They take it back. They use it in their furnaces. They have furnaces that can do that. We have a couple of people in town that do that. And then they bring the, they bring containers back and we fill them back up. So people bring in, you know, the gallon, five quart containers, one quart container, milk bottles full of it, you know, kitty litter things full. So we get them in those things and we have them in containments. They're in containment areas too. So we don't have a problem with that. But the problem, the big problem is that little shed's too small. So when we do the next thing, it's going to be a little larger area. And then what I'm going to have to do is do a rubber floor to contain it. Plus, we have containment vessels to put them in each individual. So...
If we get rid of what we got there that's a problem or at least handle it, I think